Good evening. Welcome to the regular board meeting for the Ridgefield Board of Education. Today is Monday, December 16th, 2024, and I'm calling toward this meeting. Ridgefield Public Schools inspires and empowers each individual to learn, grow, and excel. And we're here for them. Here in the boardroom, I am joined by Director Polis, Director Lees, Director Spencer, Director Carter, Superintendent Yunowski, Board Secretary Cassandra Korm, and our lovely student representatives, Tanaya and Vanessa. I would also join by members of our staff, our community partners, and also everyone watching us live on YouTube or later during the recording. Is anyone ready to review and move the agenda for approval?
So move.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Director Carter and a second by Director Lees. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Share votes aye, and our agenda is approved. So now moving into information and proposals, non-action items today would have been a public comment meeting, but no one has yet signed up. So I'm going to move to next item with Superintendent Yunowski.
All right, so we have three items on the agenda going from three up. Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness Report, formerly known as World Best Workforce, which will be preceded by our Audit Report. And our first thing, which is just more conversational, which is just a reminder to our board members about the board reorganization that occurs every January, where the board must take some action to choose for the next year: a chair, a vice chair, a treasurer, and a clerk. This will be the end of Chair Cole's second year, and historically, we have often changed from chair to vice chair. If that were to happen, that would leave an opening in terms of vice chair. But of course, whatever decision is up to you, board members. So I'm going to pause and see if anybody has anything to say about the upcoming board reorg, or their interest or willingness.
I can say I'm interested in continuing as clerk if needed. If someone else feels strongly, I welcome them to take it.
I'm gonna fight you for it.
It won't be much of a fight, but I've enjoyed it so far. I suppose the big question I would have then is for Vice Chair Carter. Again, if we follow the pattern of practice we've had for a number of years, would you be interested in serving as chair?
That means you're gonna put me on the spot here, then?
Well, would you consider it? You know, I mean, the truth is, none of us are bound to these answers, right? How we answer and vote on the first meeting in January is the one that really carries, and you could change your mind as I could. Like, I could say, maybe I want to be chair.
Right.
Right, maybe I forget what it was like and say I want to do it again.
I mean, if you want to fight for it, I would concede.
Sure, sure, okay.
I have got my head around it, and it would be willing to serve in this or that. If this board wanted that.
All right. If you could muster a majority of the quorum of the board present, yeah.
Maybe we'll talk on the side to make sure that I've got a safe majority.
We don't really have conversations on the side, Mr. Carter.
He's trying to whip up votes.
Which is why we actually weirdly are having this crazy once-a-year silly awkward conversation.
Eric, now the board whip.
We have six people, and we need to fill four spots.
Right.
So we think we have two of them. Ms. Cole, would you be interested in receding into a quiet time?
What?
Is your preference to resume an untitled director role?
Yes, yes.
This really is an awkward discussion.
It is, it is. It was, I mean, it just is what it is.
I make it awkward.
So I will say that if theoretically Mr. Carter was the chair, there would then be an open vice chair position. I'm not sure if anybody present is interested in a future as vice chair.
Anybody.
I have some eyes on me, so I would be willing to serve in that role. Let's call down.
Should your nomination receive a second?
Nominated.
Excellent.
And again, so that's in the next.
I'm sorry.
I think from a statutory standpoint, we need a chair, a treasurer, and a clerk. I don't think, I think vice chair is optional, of all things.
And we have done that, and we will continue doing that. But if he did that, that would vacate the treasurer, which would then leave us needing a treasurer, if there was anybody interested or willing to do that.
So the anybody who ever falls to...
At this point, then theoretically...
He's in the room and has a strong preference for being a...
Mr. List would probably be interested in most anything but treasurer.
All right.
Okay, good.
So we will wait and see.
So you're saying there's a chance? This is great.
I am curious, of our senior members, not age, but tenure on the board, have you both served all four roles?
Not me. I've served three of them.
Oh, which one have you served?
Clerk.
Clerk. I mean, I thought it was a badge of honor to have all four named.
I have time. I have three years.
I have completed the full tour.
I'm okay with, you know, obviously, we're here to serve. So if I need to serve as, you know, if Director Banks, who's not interested in treasure, I'll be happy to fill in that very extenuating role.
Got it. So what I'll do, we have thrown those out for things to think about. It seems like we have a couple of people interested in certain roles and some other thoughts to have.
I'm also curious about the different board responsibilities that we talked about last year. Is that also something that we would discuss at that?
Yes, that one takes a couple of meetings. So what we do in the first meeting in January is we review representative school and liaison assignments. We ask at that meeting if there's interest in transitioning or other ideas. And then we will finalize that usually at the second meeting in January, sometimes even the first meeting in February. So, all right, so with that, I'm gonna transition us out of that conversation, introduce Craig Holgie to come up and introduce the team for our spectacularly scintillating audit reports.
Very good. Thank you very much. The audit actually started, I'd say, 18 months ago when the board approved the budget in June of the previous year, so June of '23. This audit is for the '23-'24 year. The actual audit work in partnering with Bill Lauer and MMKR actually started in about June of this year with some onsite work and some prep work. We do have with us as well Director of Finance Jim Gilligan and Finance Manager John Lorenzini, who put in a lot of work in partnering and working with Bill's team to kind of gather the information, look at the details, and put everything together. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bill to share the audit report, and we'll both be available for any questions.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. What I would like to go through with you this evening is kind of three things quickly. First of all, I'm required to remind you as a body that oversees financial reporting for the district of what our role is and how that differs from the role of management when it comes to the responsibility for your financial statements. Second, I'm going to go through the audit process, how that went, and the different reports that we issue and the results of the audit. And then third, I'll just spend a little bit of time going through some of the high-level financial results for the year ended June 30 of 2024. So on this first slide, it talks about our role as auditor. As I mentioned, the main document you received in your package tonight is the district's annual financial report. All of the information that goes into putting that together is provided by district management, the responsible for the document. We come out and audit that and give an opinion as to whether it fairly presents your financial position and the results for the year under audit. Also, because the district earned more than $750,000 in federal awards again this year, you are subject to a separate single audit of those federal award expenditures. It's more of a compliance audit specifically on your federal spending. In regard to both of those audits, we're required to review your internal controls of our financial reporting and over compliance with those federal dollars, and also the compliance with the various regulations that apply to those. So you'll find report letters at the back of your financial statements regarding both of those. And finally, you're subject to an audit of compliance with Minnesota laws and regulations. There's an audit program that the state auditor's office puts out for all local governments. We audit to that and provide an opinion letter also on the back of your report with regard to that. So as far as the results of the audit, first, just let me say that Craig and Jim and John and their team had things ready for us. Everything went very smoothly. They were well-prepared. The records were in good shape. I think you're gonna find that the results of the audit I'm about to go through reflect that. Once again, we were able to provide an unmodified or what we call clean opinion on your financial statements. We had no issues. It's the highest opinion that we can give on financial statements. As far as internal control and compliance over your financial audit, we had no internal control issues or compliance findings to report this year. With regard to Minnesota legal compliance, we also had no findings to report for 2024. Just to follow up from last year, one of the things we always do is if there is a finding in the prior year, we're required to follow up on that and expand our testing. In 2023, you did have a couple disbursements that were paid late. We tested that again this year and expanded that testing, and everything was paid on time. So there was no repeat finding for that in 2024. And then finally, your federal single audit, required to issue an opinion as to whether your schedule of expenditures of federal awards is fairly stated in relation to your financial statements. That was also a clean opinion. We did have one internal control matter to report, and this is actually something that was an issue last year, too. You have requirement anytime you spend over $25,000 with a vendor in any federal program to go out and make sure they are not on the list of vendors that are suspended or debarred from doing, from participating in a federally funded contract. We, this was a finding in 2023 as well. You did put corrective actions in place, cleaned this up for the most part, but something that's fairly common in your child nutrition, your child nutrition program, this requirement isn't just if you're spending $25,000 at one time as cumulative with a vendor for the year. One of the vendors that you typically don't spend more than $25,000 with ended up going over that this year, and that was one of the ones we selected for testing. So they should have been checked for that suspension and debarment. We did not cite any compliance issue with that. We checked. They were not barred from doing business, but as part of your controls, you're required to check that and document that you did. Before I move on to the financial results, questions on any of the reports or opinions?
I have one question. So just over the methods that you, when you come across a finding like that in the current year, do you expand the scope in the current year or just apply that for the following year?
We do our testing based on not only the risk assessment for this year, but prior results. So like for the legal compliance, we picked a certain sample size last year, found late payments. So this year, we picked a larger sample when we retest that. Similar to the federal finding, because that was an issue last year, we pick a larger sample size when we're testing that particular compliance item.
And when you find a finding in the current year, do you then expand for the current year or just apply it for the following year?
It depends. In this particular case, we covered most of the ones that were over the $25,000 limit, so we didn't. We did test. We tested three different programs. We tested that particular compliance requirement, and all three, the only one where there was an issue was one contract in your child nutrition program.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, go ahead, Eric.
Well, it's a quick one. And this may be a question for Craig, actually, or either. So, and I get you're not gonna like it when I say it, but is, how many vendors do we have that fall into that category of federally funded? Is just food or just federally, federal fees?
Any goods or services that are over $25,000 in a particular, and I don't know the number.
I understand any over. My question is, is how many total vendors fall into the category of federally matched funds? And the reason where I'm going with this is that, why not just check all of them? I mean, if this is two years in a row, right, or a second time, it would seem like, why not just be proactive about it?
Yeah. I think we do that with everything that we know is gonna be $25,000 and over. We have a lot of vendors that are smaller vendors. Like this vendor, previous year was at about $14,000, so they had a larger jump to get to that point. One of our testing measures moving forward is we're going to be measuring those on a monthly basis and tracking and seeing when they're progressing. If we looked at every vendor, we have some vendors where it's much smaller, less than $5,000, or an Amazon order, or kind of different online orders that are occurring within federal funds. So those that are over $25,000, the contracts that came to the board specifically in nutrition services that are over $25,000, they all have those testing procedures in place. This is one that it wasn't anticipated to be more than $25,000. It did go over $25,000, and we just didn't catch that in that provision. So one of our quality control pieces will be looking at setting an amount of everything over $10,000 or everything over $15,000 will then have that tagged in at that point.
But that still doesn't answer my question. The question of how many vendors fall into that category?
So how many vendors fall under the $25,000?
Just into the category that, I don't know if it's specifically nutrition services or that match the federal funding. And the reason why I ask, because, take the number amount aside. If it's, if it's 10 vendors, why not check them all? If it's 100 vendors, I get that you may be reluctant to check them all, but I'm, right, I'm just trying to understand how many it is.
I'm gonna estimate that we have over 100 vendors that are participating, that we make purchases using federal dollars with, which is what this is testing. So it's in our nutrition services. It would be in any of our federal programs for title and those dollars specifically, too. We'll look and find out how many numbers. That's part of what we're taking a look at. We did kind of assess and say, what is that tier? Is it anything that we spend money in? Some of it gets complicated. Bill and I had a conversation earlier about what's an appropriate compliance procedure, kind of quality control, and had some conversation regarding exactly how to manage that.
Okay, thank you.
So I wanna clarify, because you said something about that it happened again, and I haven't heard that this is a recurrent thing, so that is a question I have. I don't think I understood, and then...
I was repeating what they said. I thought that it said, because it had happened previously, we did a wider scope.
There was a finding last year as well.
Yeah.
About the, about the $25,000?
About, we contracted for services with, without checking that someone, you're right, I think it was milk or something, without checking that the vendor was...
All right, so you're saying that because it happened last year, that we should have checked everyone?
I'm asking, so it happened last year. It happened again. My question is, is...
Or like two years in a row?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so that's, is the milk, I mean, like milk, apples?
Yep, milk, then apples. And then now, my question is, if it's happened twice, right, if we, we didn't, we didn't catch it the second time, my question is, why not do all of them?
I see, okay.
And then it's a non-issue, right? If we verify that they are not on the watch list or whatever, right? But again, if it's 10, seems like an easy task. If it's 100, now the question is, if you say to do 100, it still takes five minutes each, I still might say, is it really that time-consuming? That was like, is it... That was like, is it worth it to not get audited? And like, I'd love to have a clean audit, right? It's like, so, that's my question.
Okay, thank you. And so then, I, one thing I, I'm about like, team, help. When I'm thinking about accounting, what is the regular process? Because I know when we do audits, we don't check everything ever, right? Like we, there's this random things, and I know like at work, we're always, you know, we keep our receipts, you know, just in case the audits, and then sometimes auditors come to some of us, I mean, not here in this, the school board, but like in our day-to-day jobs, and, but I understand it's not everything. So I heard you say that because of something that happened, like you took a bigger sample. So can you walk us through for those of us not very familiar with the accounting procedures of audits? How is the, like, what are some of the guidelines that you think about?
Sure. I'll use the late payment finding that was corrected this year as an example.
Okay.
So when we tested that for 2023, we might have picked a sample of say 25 when we did our testing, and maybe we found one or two that were paid late out of that sample. So that was listed as a finding. So this year, when we came back, we increased that sample to 40 or 50, just because there was an issue in there. Part of, part of what you do when you plan your audit is you do a risk assessment, and part of what you have to take into account for that, when you're deciding, you know, where to spend your time and your resources, is if there were problem areas in the past, you need to make sure you're following up on any findings like that. And typically, then we would expand our testing. And in the case of the federal finding as well, since that was a repeat finding, whereas our guidelines might have said, you know, if you've got, I'm just throwing numbers out, 10, 10 vendors over that $25,000 threshold, we might test three or four in a typical year if we haven't had any problems there. You know, this year, we tested six or seven. So each year, we assess that based on the programs we're testing and any results from the past.
Thank you.
I had a question, you know, in regards to Eric's comment. What would happen, and this is, you know, completely, if the one guy you haven't checked in 10 years has been doing it for 10 years, has been out of compliance for 10 years, but you have never checked that, that business?
It's possible. It's a sampling process, so.
What would happen to us? I mean, what would happen?
We don't, we're only auditing one year. We're not going to go back and check to see if they were, if we find, like, this vendor is out of compliance this year, we don't go back to prior years to see if they were an issue.
The purpose for this check is to ensure that government sectors are doing business with people who are not at risk of fulfilling their contracts? That's, is that the sort of thing that would keep somebody?
Yeah, it's a protection, yeah. If there are vendors out there that have, you know, committed fraud or things like that, they get on the naughty list, and you're not supposed to do business with them. It's a protection for you and the protection for the federal agency that's giving you the money.
And can I ask, just for, I think we asked before, but I forget the answer. We are supposed to check at the time we enter into a contract, at least at that time, or every subsequent purchase that's made?
We look for once a year, but it needs to be before you spend $25,000 with them, obviously, before you've spent the money with the vendor. So typically, what we see is pretty similar to what you're doing, where all of the, you know, you tend to use the same vendors, or you bid for new ones for food, that kind of thing. And all of those that you know are your main providers, people do that right away upfront. What we see most often in the child nutrition area is that some of these vendors that you maybe didn't do as much business with last year start creeping up, because it is cumulative if you spend $25,000 over the course of the year. And having a mechanism, like Craig was talking about, where you're keeping track of what you're spending, so that before you get close to that threshold, you're also checking them is, you know, one, one control that we see fairly often as well. There's nothing, so it says you can't check them all. I don't know when you start getting down to, you know, if you are going, buying, I don't know, paper plates or something at Cub. I mean, you know, there's, there's an area where it no longer makes sense, but.
Also, just to be clear, this report is from 7-1-23 to 7-1-24, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so what we heard about last year's, which was 7-1-22 to 3 in December, and at that time, we spoke about, can we take corrective action? But we, by then, we'd already had six months perhaps of the corrective action not happening, which could lead into this audit. Right? So we spoke a year ago about, hey, how, you know, what can we beef up how we review and demonstrate that we checked? Like, I think the next contract we'd approved, the one question that came up was, did we validate and make sure that they were on the, you know, we're not on the naughty list? And so, but it's possible that, that in the six months that's within this audit, before we'd taken that extra step to, to have a heightened sense of scrutiny on the list, that this could have happened in that timeframe. And so, as a board member, I'm not as, like, it's frustrating, it's all frustrating, but I'm not as frustrated, like, I thought we had talked about this, and then it happened again. It's entirely plausible that the violation of sorts happened within the six months of the year under here, which was already underway when we found about last year's results and spoke about, can we take corrective actions? So, okay. That's, I'm just trying to work through that in my head and understand, like, and it's anyone who's at the $25,000 threshold cumulative throughout the year? And so we could go through it with someone if we don't typically buy much, but all of a sudden, we're up to $800 a week, and then we get to it at some point? Okay. No, thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
And I'll just add, this was a miss because it was the cumulative piece. I think that since the last finding, we got really good at any one of the contracts, which is usually those that are going over $25,000. Any one of those contracts, we were checking before we were bringing them to board. There's either a website, some of them are not listed on the website, so we have to track down those vendors. So those that were the contracts that were over $25,000, we knew. This one grew in a year from beyond what we expected, and we just missed it on that piece. Raised our awareness of it, raised our awareness to look deeper at some of those pieces that are cumulative. So we are putting actions in place now this year to make sure that we're monitoring those purchases on a monthly basis, to make sure that we aren't getting to that point where it's getting close to the $25,000, and we haven't run it, so.
So then, I heard you saying, Tim, thank you for that. My question then would come back to the, so if the audit period ends June 30th, that is a big window, right? It's like you're almost running a six-month lag. Is there a way to shorten that window down from an audit perspective to get it done faster?
I'd have to go back and look when we actually did the testing, but when we find it, we make them aware of it. So this isn't the first time they've heard of it.
Yes, we've been talking about it for four months, probably.
Yeah. Well, I'm just, I mean, I hear what you're saying, and, right, it's like, or if that's the case, right, it's like, it's useful information to have. So, thanks for your questions.
It's challenging to suggest that we have the audit process happen faster while still asking for it to be as rigorous as we expect, so.
Right. To me, the question in this case is, how do we make sure we are tracking the cumulative amount spent with one vendor and not having that slip through the cracks, right? So as they said, a $25,000 receivable contract, that's easy. But we should have some form of running total that we are paying out to a particular vendor, and our computers do track that? That should be something that's.
Right, and we're more aware of it now than we were a year ago or six months ago, and we're more aware of, you know, so.
Correct.
I imagine, right, that sixth month, that the gap that I'd suggested about the repeated finding here, I'm sure with the awareness, we'll go back and look through all our purchases and make sure that we've certified compliance for everyone who should be at this point forward.
John was just sharing that they've already implemented the corrective actions on this one, so they are doing that monitoring on a regular basis.
That's great, thank you.
Anything else? Otherwise, I'll move along to the financial information. First thing I'm going to touch on is your general fund, your primary operating fund. This graph shows a history of your general fund, year-end financial position in terms of your unrestricted fund balances, the blue bars there, and your cash and investments at the end of the year, which are the yellow bars. At the end of 2024 fiscal year, you had just under $23 million in cash and investments and total fund balances of about $18.7 million. Your fund balances were up about $1.1 million in total, about, and you'd budgeted, pretty much break even, you'd budgeted to spend fund balance down by $82,000. The next slide shows some of the numbers behind the total fund balance. You report fund balance in different components, non-spendable, restricted fund balances, and then the two unrestricted categories assigned and unassigned, which you control essentially at a local level. Your non-spendable fund balances of $535,000 went up by about $458,000 from last year, and that's basically due to cutting a check for a Chromebook purchase where you didn't have the goods yet, it was a prepayment for that. The restricted fund balances are essentially the state mandated spending restrictions, kind of the strings that come with some of your funding. Of that $4.7 million, you have about $2.3 million, which is related to capital, operating capital, long-term facilities maintenance. You've also got about $545,000 for student activities and scholarships, and those are both kind of funds that you don't really spend on general fund purposes. The student activities are for the student activity accounts at the building levels. You've got another $700,000 for your area learning center programs, about $850,000 for basic skills programming, and a little over $300,000 of other smaller restrictions there. And those are the two categories where you saw the increase in fund balance, your restricted fund balances went up by 1.1 million, and as I mentioned, non-spendable, non-spendables up by about $458,000. The two remaining categories assigned, which you earmark locally, and unassigned, which you can spend for everything, were pretty close to last year. It actually went down by about $435,000 in the total of those two categories. That's why you're seeing at the bottom there, we track those unrestricted and unassigned fund balances, the percent of your annual expenditures. Even though your total fund balance went up, you're seeing those ratios go down. That's kind of a, both where the fund balance went up and also because the size of your general fund operation, your spending has been growing also. Another thing that we track year to year is the number of students that you serve that generate general education aid for the district. These play into some of your larger funding formulas. You had a pretty stable year student-wise. You served an average day of membership of about 4,035, and that, when the pupil weightings are applied, the pupil units that generated were about 4,413. That's the students that go into your aid calculations. That was a decrease of about 12 from last year, so about a quarter of a percent change year over year. Your total general fund revenues for fiscal 2024 were just under $82 million. You're about $230,000 over budget, a variance of about 3/10 of a percent. Mainly that was in your federal sources, which were $831,000 over budget, and that's because you made an election for the first time in 2024 to utilize about $870,000 of your federal entitlement to pay tuition for special education. State sources offset that a little bit. You're about $445,000 under budget on state, state aid, mainly special ed and general education, were slightly under budget. Revenues grew by about 7 million, roughly 9% overall. The majority of that, or almost all of that, basically was in state aid. You did receive funding increases both on the general education formula and on the percentage of special education costs that the state was paying. So you saw increases in both of those aids of about $4 million each over the prior year. On the expenditure side, you spent just under $81 million for the year. This is where most of your budget variance was. You're about $985,000 under budget, roughly a 1.2% underspending. Salaries and benefits were about $1.8 million under budget, mainly due to inability to spend, to fill all of your budgeted positions due to the challenging labor market. As a result of that, you did see purchase services over budget by about 1.4 million. A lot of that was in special education. And then your other expenditures were about $760,000 under budget, and mainly that's debt service. You had less lease payments and finance purchase payments than you had projected. Spending grew by about 3.2 million in the general fund, a little over 4%. Salaries and benefits went up by about 2.8 million, purchase services by another 2 million. That's basically where that increase came from. Your capital spending offset that a bit, that went down by about 1.5 million. Some of that's timing your projects, and also you had $825,000 in lease purchases in 2023 that you did not have recurring in 2024. Then briefly to touch on a few of your other operating funds, excuse me, your food service fund ended the year with a total fund balance of about $942,000. Your annual revenues and expenditures in that fund are just under $4 million. Fund balance went up by about $220,000, which was roughly $340,000 better than projected in your budget. And that year-end fund balance represents about 25% of your annual expenditures in that fund. The community service fund ended the year with total fund balance of about $358,000. It's about 16,000, or I'm sorry, 16% of the annual expenditures in that fund, which are about $2.25 million for the 2024 fiscal year. Your fund balance went up by about $65,000. That was about $150,000 better than budget. Two other funds, which I don't have pictured here, pictured here that I'll just mention briefly, they kind of run themselves. You maintain a building construction fund and a debt service fund, and these are essentially where you are accounting for some of the debts you're issuing to build capital assets. Your building construction fund, you had a $2.3 million bond issue in 2024. You spent a little over half of that on projects, so the rest of that's going to be wrapped up in the current year you're operating in. So your fund balance was about $933,000 higher at the end of the year. And your debt service fund, fund balance there was about $2.2 million. That went up by about $125,000, and pretty much everything in that fund is approved when you issue bonds. All the debt service levies are approved in that process, so you're collecting the tax levies and paying debt. You retired a little over $5 million in outstanding bonds through that fund during the year. Excuse me, just going to grab a sip of water here, my voice is going. My last slide here is a very, very compact version of the first financial statement that you will find in your overall document. It's the district-wide statement and net position, so there's kind of a second layer of financial reporting in your statements. This takes all of your fund information, which only reports current assets and current liabilities, all those funds that we just talked about, converts it to a full accrual basis, and it provides you with more of a long-term indication of your financial position and change from year to year. So the top part of this walks through how you get from the fund balances, so the, about $26.2 million total fund balances and the funds we just went through, to a total net position that's a deficit of about $8 million. You've got capital assets and a depreciation of about $151 million. And I'll just remind you, this is based on the cost of those assets, this isn't replacement value or actual value today. Then below that, you see the bonds, leases, finance purchases. These are the capital-related debt that you issued to purchase or construct those assets. And then the two things below that, pension liabilities and other post-employment benefits are long-term benefits for your employees. The pension liabilities are primarily your proportionate share of the two statewide pension plans through PERA and TRA that the bulk of your employees belong to. Each year, they do a actuarial study, determine the level of funding of those. determine the level of funding of those plans. And everybody, all the school districts, cities, counties that have employees that participate in those plans are required to report their proportionate share of any underfunding on their entity-wide full accrual financial statements, just like you see here. So your share for employees of your district that participated in those plans was about a $43 million liability at the end of 2024. So you can see from the bottom there, this is the different pieces of net position that you report on your financial statements. You've got about $25 million in your net investment in capital assets. That went down about $3 million, mainly due to depreciation and amortization. Your restricted net positions are basically those fund balance restrictions we talked about in the general fund, plus anything that's restricted by the fund that's in like your food service, capital service funds. All those fund balances convert to restricted net position. And then that unrestricted net position is essentially your fund balance in the general fund that's unassigned or unrestricted, offset by those pension liabilities and other post-employment benefit liabilities that are not funded. That's why you're seeing the deficit there. You did see an improvement in that portion of net position of about $5.3 million. A lot of that is coming from, if you go back to the top part there, the funding levels of both pension plans and your other post-employment benefits improved from the year before. So that's part of what's driving that improvement in that unrestricted net position. That's everything I typically go through from a number standpoint, unless you had questions.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the detail. And your patience with our questions.
Absolutely.
That's what I'm here for.
Do you have any questions? No? Going once, going twice? Thank you so much. Lot of detail. I appreciate the clarity, the visuals, the graphs, everything. Thank you so much. See you next year.
All right. And so with that, and just as a reminder, the world's best workforce has changed into the comprehensive achievement and civic readiness, just because we like to change titles and like to change names. So I'm going to bring up Dr. Daniels and Director Jenzen Ward. So let's turn it over to Dr. D for our presentation.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I am here along with Rachel Jenz, who is our Director of Elementary Education, and Alex Ward, our Director of Secondary Education. And we are about to report out on our results around the comprehensive achievement and civic readiness work. Our learning target for tonight, in keeping with the best practices around instruction, is we will review the outcomes of Richfield Schools' comprehensive achievement and civic readiness goals. For success criteria, we would like you to walk away understanding the results and outcomes around our school readiness, career and college readiness, high school graduation, and the work we've done around the racial and achievement gaps. Superintendent Yunowski has shared what the acronym C-A-C-R stands for, but it is simply the world's best workforce rebranded in the last legislation. And it was rebranded to accomplish a few things. It was rebranded to, of course, capture the achievement of our students pre-K-12 and their learning experiences within our school district and within respective school districts across the state. But it was also rebranded to ensure that we are preparing students to be active citizens in our society once they graduate, and also to prepare them to become lifelong learners. Next, we're gonna have Rachel talk about school readiness.
So as I've shared with you in the past, the assessment that we use to measure kindergarten readiness is called the Teaching Strategies Goal Assessment. It's an assessment that we use in all of our preschool programs, and it is a blend of both teacher observation of students demonstrating early literacy and numeracy skills, as well as work sampling, collecting samples of students applying those skills in action. So some of the early literacy skills that we are measuring include phonological awareness, so students' ability to hear and manipulate individual sounds and words, being able to recognize features of books, the front cover, the back cover, things like that, demonstrating knowledge of the alphabet, and emergent letter-sound correspondences, students being able to retell familiar stories, as well as recognize and write their first name and some common letters that they're learning in their classes as well. In math, the skills we're measuring include basic counting skills, both forwards and backwards, as well as recognizing numerals, matching quantities of items to the numeric representation of those quantities, and understanding positional words, identifying basic shapes, and then also comparing and ordering objects by size, length, and weight, those types of attributes. So you can see that last fall, fall 2023, we experienced a bit of a decline in the number of students entering our preschool programs with some of these skills already in place. So we had about 9% of our students entering preschool with a beginning mastery of those kindergarten readiness skills in literacy. We did a really good job accelerating their progress, ending the year with close to 90% of those students demonstrating kindergarten readiness benchmarks in place. So even though we had a wider gap to close than we did during the 2022-23 school year, we did accelerate progress, but did fall short of meeting our 10% increase goal. We had about a 5% increase in our overall proficiency instead. In math, similar to literacy, we saw fewer students entering our preschool programs in the fall, already demonstrating mastery of some of those early numeracy skills, but made a tremendous amount of progress, right, about 77% of students exiting preschool having those skills in place. So we actually made more progress in closing that fall-to-spring gap last year than we did the previous year. But again, you see that we didn't quite hit our goal. We were down to about 77%, 10% less than what we had hoped to gain. So overall, we're seeing that our preschool programs, when looking at where students come in in the fall compared to where they leave in the spring, are very effective in helping students be prepared for kindergarten. We see this paralleled in our FastBridge reports, where we have anywhere from about 20% to 25% of students in the fall demonstrating high risk in reading and math. So very similar to what we're seeing in terms of the proficiency levels at the end of our preschool programs.
Excuse me, can I ask, was there something, like, are we recruiting or attracting different students with different backgrounds or something else that would lead to like the drop off from fall '22 to fall '23 in terms of like that the entry point literacy and math awareness?
Yeah, well, we-
That fall '23 ranked at, you know, scored a zero is surprising, right? So we seem to be getting a different group of kids than we did the prior year.
It's somewhat that. It's also after COVID, we did see a decline in the number of students attending our early childhood family education classes, right? So there, some parents or families were maybe reluctant to bring young children into a space where they were shared. We are starting to now see increases in families returning to our ECFE classes, but that was something immediately following the pandemic. We did have a decline in the number of students participating in those programs.
But, and also, the total number of students is about the same for fall '22 and fall '23?
Yeah, we've had a slight decline, I would say, within the past year in our preschool programs. We did have to close one section last year, so.
All right, thank you.
All right, so reading proficiency for third grade, reading proficiently by third grade is no longer a part of the world's best workforce or the renamed comprehensive achievement and civic readiness goal areas. But we did want to include this information for you tonight as you're used to seeing this data and wanted to give you a comparison from years past. In the future, we will be reporting our reading proficiency through the READ Act Local Literacy Plan and Data Report that we submit annually to the state rather than the comprehensive achievement and civic readiness plan. So you can see that last year we had about a 1.5% increase in the percentage of students demonstrating proficiency based on our state assessment. So this is from the MCA as well as the MTAS assessment, so our state accountability assessments. We continue to make this slight upward progress despite the state actually showing a decline in the number of students demonstrating reading proficiency at third grade. Overall, within our system, we also had an increase, so not just at that third grade level, but as we look across our K-12 system as well. As you know, we have put a number of very specific strategies and measures in place to really target improvements in our literacy instruction. And I will share more about what those are later when we get to our priorities and our strategies page.
Closing the achievement gap in student groups. And so the achievement gap describes persistent discrepancy between groups of students. And though it is called an achievement gap, we know that the achievement gap is informed by many socioeconomic factors, even some systemic factors such as race, gender, socioeconomic status, et cetera. And so although we call it an achievement gap, we know that there are many factors baked within the gap that makes it exist. For the purpose of this presentation, I will be sharing the achievement of our students, Latino and Black, in comparison to their white counterparts as measured by the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments in Math and Reading. I will share the data on the next two slides. And at the end of the presentation, we will talk about how our team is targeting the gap here in Richfield Public Schools. As you see, both our Latino and white students made growth in math from the '22-'23 school year to the '23-'24 school year. Our white students, they were able to almost hit 60% proficiency, doing very well, exceeding the state. However, our white students grew faster, thus the gap between our Latino students and our white students also grew. Our Latino students, they grew from 17.6% to 19.3%, so about a 1.7% percentage in growth. And our white students, again, they grew almost 5%, which means that our gap grew between our Latino and our white students. The same is true for reading. Our Latino students and white students grew in reading, with our Latino students growing from 23.4% to 23.7%, but our white students growing by 5% to almost 65% and exceeding the state average. And so again, you see that we have a persisting gap because although our Latino students are growing in math and reading, our white students are growing at a much faster rate. And looking at our black students, we see our black students took a slight step back in math proficiency from 16.4% in the '22-'23 school year to 15.7% last school year. Our white students, again, they were at about 60%. And so that means that our gap widened to almost 5% more between, in looking at our black students and our white students in math. In reading, our black students took a slight step forward from 24.3% to 24.4% in reading proficiency, but the stubborn gap grew by 5.1%. In conclusion, from looking at this data, we want to celebrate the resilience of all of our students, especially our white students, as it relates to their proficiency and how they continue to outperform the state. We also want to celebrate the growth of our students of color as we look at how they are responding to the strategies that we have in place to bounce back from what happened to them during the pandemic. However, we are very clear and certain that much more intentional work has to happen in order for them to accelerate their achievement, such as our white students, in closing the achievement gap. Next, we're gonna have Alex talk about the ACT in college and career readiness.
All right, thank you. In 11th grade, Richfield's students take the ACT test. And often, we think of 36 as the perfect score, right? What is less known typically is each of the subtests has a college readiness score, which makes it a little confusing is each one is different. So English, the college readiness score is an 18. Math and reading, the college readiness score or benchmark is a 22. And in science, the college readiness is a 23. And so what this graph shows is what percentage of our students are hitting that college readiness benchmark in each of the four subtests of the ACT. In 2024, if you notice, we made improvements in all areas, right? And in fact, in 2024, we even improved the 2022 scores other than math. And so while we're not at the 2020-2021 levels that we have been, we outperformed 2023 and in all areas outperformed 20, in all areas other than math, outperformed 2022. When it comes to math, we are working with the math team, especially in the high school, to think, how can we do instruction differently? One thing we have started this year is we brought the Math Fast Test into ninth grade, and we gave it to all ninth-grade students in intermediate algebra. And we're starting to use the progress monitoring with ninth graders to see if we can start offering the appropriate interventions for our ninth-grade students in math. Next slide. Our four-year graduation rate continues to be well above the state levels, and in fact, surpassed our goal this past year. Talking to leaders at both the high school and RSEP, it's clear that our work in standards-based grading, offering multiple opportunities for students to demonstrate proficiency, and providing real-time supports in our buildings has contributed to our continued upward trend in our graduation rate. The next slide here just shows RHS and RSEP separate. But you'll notice RSEP basically maintained the same, and RHS made nice gains.
Now, we're gonna talk about some of the work that we're doing to target some of these achievement opportunities we've shared with you.
As we shared earlier, this fall, you know that we have made some significant shifts in the curriculum that we are using for K-5 literacy, specifically reading and writing instruction. Last year, we had about 40 of our classrooms who piloted Benchmark Advance and Adelante. And because we saw students in those particular classrooms using that curriculum outperform their peers using our previously adopted curriculum, the Teachers College Reading and Writing Project Units of Study, we did move forward with district-wide implementation this year. So our teachers are continuing to get training in how to use Benchmark Advance and Adelante effectively, both from consultants from the company as well as from our literacy coaches who have received some additional training as well. We are also continuing to use Mystery Science as our core science program. One of the wonderful things about Benchmark Advance and Adelante is that it embeds science concepts within the curriculum. But we still know that students need those hands-on science experiments and opportunities, right, to do science, not just learn about the concepts. So we're continuing to use that curriculum at the elementary level.
And then in the middle school, Amplify Science is in its second year of implementation. And it's clear from talking to the science team, the administrators, and even observing through our learning walks that the curriculum has really solidified our science offering in the middle school. We're seeing very clear learning targets and guiding questions and just use of materials that students are showing that they're learning science. And then our secondary ELA curriculum review is in process. The team has heard from all three providers and is using this month and part of next month to kind of review those on their own. And then January 27th is our professional development day, where the team will have virtually the entire day to go through the materials and make a recommendation on which materials they'd like to use moving forward. We also have curriculum nights for parents and community members. for parents and community members happening in January and February. And that information will be coming out in an email tomorrow or Wednesday, so.
Instruction continues to be the main vehicle in which we attack achievement and achievement disparities. We believe strongly, it's conclusive in looking at the research, that high-quality Tier One instruction is not negotiable. It is an expectation. And it is an expectation that we inspect in Richfield Public Schools. It is not popular. At every MOA committee meeting or at committee meetings that we have with our advisory group, as Ken witnessed last week, we receive heat for going into classrooms twice a year to look for evidence-based practices as they are aligned to our learning walk practice profiles that have been designed specifically for what we should be looking for at the elementary level with Rachel in partnership with instructional leaders at the elementary level and Alex in partnership with instructional leaders at the secondary level. But we continue to do learning walks to inspect practices and collect aggregate information to inform professional development so we can improve instruction and again, outcomes for students. That happens twice a year in the fall and the winter. And we have concluded our first learning walk, and we will start our second one again in February and conclude it in March for the 24-25 school year. We also have coaching cycles that again, support instruction. We have instructional coaches because we no longer have the literacy grant at the elementary level. So we have instructional coaches across our buildings. We also have peer reviewers. But our coaches are aligned in what we should be looking for in our classrooms. Each year, teachers are engaged in at least one formal coaching cycle with their instructional coach, and they can request additional coaching sessions from their coaches as needed and as their time permits. But the coaching cycles are around curriculum implementation. For example, Benchmark or Adelante, as Rachel has shared, the work that we are implementing, the curriculum that we're implementing right now at the elementary level. It also can be around a new math curriculum, the new science work that's being rolled out. And so coaching can happen around curriculum. It can happen around instruction. And it also can happen around something specifically that a teacher requests. And lastly, this year, it is expected that all principals are in classrooms at least once per month giving feedback to teachers around instructional practices. It is an expectation from Superintendent Unowski. And so principals are in classrooms, visible, monthly providing feedback. But also, coaches are in classrooms supporting, and our directors are in classrooms as well observing and providing instructional feedback. They are also at the table when the teams have meetings around the data, our data teams' meetings, instructional leadership team meetings. They attend PLCs, all of these different things, infrastructure to support instruction in our schools.
We also have a strong focus on a variety of professional development activities with our staff. One of our biggest lifts this year is letters training. So letters, as you know, stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. And this is a professional development program that all of our K-5 classroom teachers, as well as our K-5 EL teachers and our K-12 special education staff and K-12 reading interventions are participating in. So this is really around what are evidence-based practices in literacy instruction aligned with the science of reading? And then how do we make sure we're implementing those practices in tandem with our curriculum? So we've got a variety of different ways that teachers are engaging in that learning this year, both through after-school learning academies as well as sessions on professional development days. We are also training all of our district-wide coaches, including our instructional coaches and our peer reviewers, in letters as well, so that they are fully equipped to support those practices when they are doing their coaching, when they're co-planning with teachers, when they're modeling, when they're observing, when they're co-teaching alongside of them. We also continue to have a very robust professional learning community model. So we have teacher leaders who facilitate their PLCs, and those teacher leaders participate in ongoing training and feedback sessions throughout the year to increase their skills in facilitation, to increase their understanding of how to effectively look at data and make instructional decisions using that data, how to look at student work samples, and consider what's the next best step for students based on those. And then we have aligned all of our calendar professional development days to follow a similar structure with choice sessions in the morning, followed by building-specific professional development, and then teacher-directed professional learning. The choice sessions have allowed us to offer differentiated PD to all of our staff so that they have the opportunity to take courses that are aligned to what they teach, sometimes what they need some relicenter credits in, or what they feel is going to best help them move forward in their practice, while also making sure that we stay focused on our district priorities.
And then with data and systems, we use FastBridge to screen all students in reading, math, and social-emotional behaviors, K through 12, and then K through nine, I'm sorry. We use FastBridge to screen all students in social-emotional behavior twice a year, K through 12. And then in academics, K through nine, three times a year, once in the fall, once in the winter, and once in the spring. Students who are below benchmark in any one of those areas, FastBridge recommends an intervention. And our teachers are learning to use the intervention report to do either whole-class, small-group, or individual interventions. Now, the cool thing about FastBridge is it also provides a progress monitoring tool. So instead of waiting, instead of doing an intervention and waiting three to four months to see if it worked or not, we can also do progress monitoring either weekly or bi-weekly, depending on how intense the intervention assessment is. Some are one-on-one, and some are more computerized. So depending on how intense it is, you might do that bi-weekly or weekly. But then we can monitor whether or not the intervention is working and either increase the amount of time we do the intervention for, increase the number of days we do the intervention for, or if the intervention's not working, find a different intervention altogether, right? And so I think K through nine, the progress monitoring has gotten much better this year, and we're starting to see trends going in the right direction. Standards-based grading continues to make improvements, both pedagogically and technically. On the pedagogical side, we continue to increase instructional clarity with professional development and coaching, making sure our learning targets and success criteria connect to standards and that those standards have a direct correlation to rubrics on which the students will be assessed. On the technical side, we're just getting much cleaner on being very clear to students when things will be graded and when things need to be turned in by or retaken for additional scoring. And so that's that. And then analytics and insights, formerly called WHO KNEW IT, our Director of Technology has spent hours and hours and hours making sure we have accurate, clean, live data to continuously look at how our students are doing.
So at the conclusion of our presentation, we hope we have accomplished our learning target by sharing the outcomes of our comprehensive achievement and career civic readiness goals. And also, you've learned about our school readiness outcomes, career and college readiness outcomes, high school graduation, and racial and achievement gaps. And with that, we will take any questions you have for us.
Thank you very much. Right, open floor. Who has questions, comments?
I just have one comment. It's back to like the age gap for Latino students. And I think, like, I see it in classrooms all the time where like teachers put translations of, like, in Spanish of the instructions, the lessons, or even writing it down on paper. And I think it's like a really good, like, step to take for students to make that effort or like to see that growth. Like, there's so many Spanish speakers that are now like learning that English. And I think it's very nice because I'm like, I guess we both have a better set of communication set. And yeah, that's it. I just appreciate the schools.
Thank you so much, Vanessa.
Thank you, Vanessa.
Always appreciate the insights from the classroom.
I'll segue right onto that. It's like a Rosetta Stone for Spanish to English. But you know, we do test everyone for MCAs, okay? And we do have a increasing number of newcomers and less than two years in country kids from all over the world. But when you look at the Latino kids, you know, of course, our scores are going to be low. They can't read. They can't, they're not literate in English yet. Is there a way, and I'm sure I've asked this before, is there a way that we can factor them out to see what the, over two years of, you know, those who are more literate in English are doing? And I don't know if that's a Richfield issue or if that's a...
I think that's a state issue around expectations for the MCA. We do know that our, what we do know is that our EL Director, Dr. Will Height, she assesses in partnership with principals and our EL teachers, our EL students annually, using the access test to assess how well they are progressing academically. And so that is a test specifically to assess them around reading, writing, and speaking. And so that is used to, again, Director Ken, to figure out, you know, how they're growing. But I think as far as what is expected for Minnesotans around the MCA, all students must be tested.
It would be interesting to someday factor out the newcomers and see what our scores are.
Thank you.
That was a lot. Thank you. Maybe one of those, back to where we chunk it up a little bit because I could feel like my questions are delayed. And I'm going to hold my hand in advance in case you answered this, and I totally blanked on it. One of the things that got my attention is back to the naming, very back to the beginning, right? Is World's Best Workforce to CACR, Comprehensive Achievement and Career Readiness. And one of the things we talked about is civic readiness, which I feel like we glossed over that. Is that me or did I miss that?
No, I don't think we...
So civic readiness, then strictly like, whether or not are students ready to go get a job and work versus what I would consider true civic readiness?
So in moving forward, we will be able to pull data to see where our students are enrolling in college. That could be something that we could share during this report. That will be an indicator of civic readiness and again, is graduation rate. This is new. We pulled this report together for this school year, but this is a new format, and it will continue to get better as we continue to report out to you all.
I'm just curious, and this is not, it's like, there's a question for you guys, right? This is a state thing, and like, here's what the state's going after and like, what it really means to districts outside of the metro area, for example, right? And so just, right, it has certain undertones, and I'm curious how that'll change in the upcoming years. So that's, I'm just curious because it...
That's good.
It didn't feel like you guys really addressed that. And I don't think that's a thing on you. It's more of a, we use a term, but it's like, does it really apply?
Right, how do we measure civic readiness? And what does it really mean?
Right, is it just ability to work? Like, are they going to be good citizens? Yeah, I think there's a lot longer discussion on that one. So then, I'm going to try my best to say this right because I thought I heard flip-flopping on terms. But the teachers weren't keen in the two times your learning walks?
It's not popular, no.
Okay, so then the my immediate question, especially as we think about closed session and negotiations, did they come back with a, we prefer this? If you guys are saying, we want to do that, they don't like it, then what would they propose as a better choice from their perspective?
I think they would prefer that we just trust them as professionals and not be in their space for the 10 to 15 minutes that we're in our space twice per year. They, not everyone, but some teachers view it as us not trusting them and trusting them to be professionals, which we do, we do understand. But we have an expectation. We report to you all annually around this work. And we look at the data as a team quite frequently with the fast assessments, the screeners that we give in the fall, the winter, and the spring. And when we look at the results, we feel a moral imperative to do things differently in order to raise achievement for students. And so it may cause some discomfort in the moment, but the larger picture, the larger goal, is how are we improving around our instructional practices when we know that instruction is the main lever to pull or to push, whatever you want to call it, in order to improve achievement? So we have to have a pulse on what's going on in the classroom.
Do we share these numbers, these charts with the teachers?
Absolutely.
And just, because I'm looking on, again, right? It's like, they go, well, stop doing the learning walk. We don't like it, they're dumb, whatever they want to say. But then look at the numbers, right? It's like, the numbers are like, there's a problem. We're trying to fix it, right? Because your point is like, we're asking these questions going, I mean, when I look at this, of the four numbers that you're tracking, three of them, we got worse on, one we stayed the same on, right? That doesn't, it's not a great showing, right? So then there's a problem somewhere. And if they don't have a recommendation to fix it, right? It's like, we're trying to do something.
Yes, so we do share, and this work is led directly by our directors, but the rubric or the practice profile that's used, that's shared with all teachers, that's shared with the principal, that's shared with the instructional leadership team. We invite instructional leadership team members, the directors, to participate in the learning walk protocol with us, along with other directors, again, to build trust, to build transparency around the process as well. And then at the conclusion, when they've collected the aggregate data, Rachel and I, Alex and I, we go back out, meet with the instructional leadership teams around the aggregate scores for them to discuss their wins and their opportunities to address some of these things in their school improvement plans and building-level professional development. We use it to drive district-level professional development, perhaps program-level professional development. But this is how we're using that data to drive improvements and change. And so we continue to fight the good fight, that uphill battle. But it is not a popular strategy for us to be employing right now. It's not.
And I think just to paint a picture for board members so you can hear what is different. So our teachers are used to a principal coming in their room on a regular basis. They're used to an instructional coach coming in on a regular basis. Typically, they get some form of specific feedback based on their performance that comes out of those visits. A learning walk is about system-wide data, so it's not giving an individual teacher feedback. And it is done by a group of people, not an individual or one or two. So imagine you're... Right, so imagine five people coming in.
It's like rounds in ER.
It's like rounds in ER, like you might see on TV. So there are five or six people coming in rather than the one or two. And then they're not giving you specific feedbacks.
Three or four.
Three or four. There's a group, but they're not giving specific feedback on how you did. They're actually trying to do this from a system-wide level. But it creates a feeling, a feeling of stress, and it doesn't happen every day. If they did it every day, which we're not suggesting, that would actually reduce the stress level. When I started, it wasn't as much of a common practice for principals to be in rooms on a regular basis. Or I recall from my first year, people were very uncomfortable that the superintendent was going in classrooms on a regular basis, and so was the assistant soup. And so once people get more and more accustomed, they do get more and more used to it, and it creates less stress. But this is, because it only happens a couple times a year, it just is always going to increase some tension. So, and that's the tension we're just going to have to live with.
I think that's one of the things that, with anything that's different, like, what can we do to help our staff understand why we do it? Because what I hear is similar arguments against the MCA. Like, but why do we do it if I, like, I personally am not getting, but maybe if we get to understand that this is actually just that quality control so that we can have a good picture of like, kind of comparing apples to apples and hearing that, you know, certain grade levels are teaching the same things, that the quality of the instruction. Because I think sometimes we start in, and I know that we don't have that many lessons. And I'm sure that's probably been in an email, but like, that kind of understanding, like maybe during the staff meeting, like, I want you to know that like, and these are the results. Because I think sharing back, like, collectively speaking, this is what we learned from the thing, and this is how that's changing, can make it a little bit less... thing and this is how that's changing, can make it a little bit less, because I'm imagining, you know, that's never, you know, a, a, a little thing can disrupt the remainder of the day, especially in early elementary in my position, you know, so that, but if teachers get to see the, the value of that, then can negotiate more.
And, and in my director's defense, they do. So from fall to winter, they will share. In fact, they'll even share from, from what, winter to fall if there is improvement, and then also from fall to winter if there is improvement. And that, those changes are shared with, with the team. And when we target, target specific areas with professional development, many times we see a jump. And that's also shared with teams as well, with respective instructional leadership teams and principals as well. So we do share the, the wins with the staff.
That is an area of strength for the Teaching and Learning Department. So they will also then offer professional development based on the findings and they're very clear, you know, if we are implementing benchmark and there's something that needs more attention, Rachel will design professional development for our staff on our PD days related to that work and related to the findings, and then we share back, these were the findings, hey, by the way, here's the PD that we're going to be serving and be offering because that was defined as a need for our system.
That answer your question? Or do you have more? Go ahead.
I do have one more. Thank you. Just that last comment, you may see if all principals are in, are now in the classroom once per month. I'm assuming that's one class per month.
No, all, so the principals are in classrooms on a more than monthly regular, regular basis. That's every classroom in every building. The expectation is that the principal is in that classroom and receive, the teacher is receiving feedback on what is seen at least one times per month, and they are expected to be in classrooms a significant time more than that. And so they're in classrooms on a regular basis and then they are documenting feedback at least on a monthly basis.
Until like in the high school then, is that divided between the assistant principals?
They do, yeah. They share responsibilities in buildings with the multiple administrators. And then I believe in both of our secondaries, they are generally responsible for each different curricular areas, but they also rotate to make sure that they're all getting a glimpse of all of the classrooms.
Great. You took all my questions. Thank you. You had mentioned that the third grade reading is going to be reported in the future under the REDACT report. Is it the same data, the same test, or is it switching to something new?
No, it will be switching to FAST bridge. So it's based on our universal screening assessment required by the state.
Okay. And then as a part of that, is there like a three to five-year trajectory goal that we can see when you bring that to, that information to us? I'm just wondering like, how fast are we hoping to close that gap?
Yeah. So as you know, last year was our first year with FAST bridge. What we are, all of us at the management team level and principals, we've all aligned our goal, right, so that we are looking for at least 80% of our students to be making typical or aggressive growth. So rather than, you know, necessarily a certain proficiency level, we're looking for that closing in the gap for all students.
Okay. Good. Thank you. And then Alex, you had mentioned in the FAST bridge, FAST bridge tests, tests reading, math, and social emotional behavior. Can you talk a little bit about how it tests social emotional behavior? What does that look like?
Yeah. So there's two components to that and it's done twice a year, not three times a year. One is there's a student survey, more or less. So students kind of fill out a survey and then advisory teachers actually also fill out something for each student in their advisory. And then, I don't know, the inner workings of FAST, but there are numbers that are reported and then just like in literacy or math, there are students who are, you know, identified as maybe needing attention and then we see.
So it's like a, it's like a rating from the teacher based on what they've experienced in the last few months or?
Correct. Yep.
I was trying to figure out how that would be tested on a computer.
Yeah. Well, one day you'll just look at it and it'll just know. Yeah.
Hey, pay attention.
Yeah.
Good. Going back to Ken's comment about, you know, is there a way for us, and we've talked about this before, like, how do we look at students that we've had enough time to make a strong impact on, right? So students that have been here for two, three years. I think I'd like to see in data, like, what does, what does churn look like for our students? How many, like, what percent of our students have been here less than 12 months by grade? What percent of students have been here less than 24 months per grade? And anytime we look at that, any data we're comparing to the state, I want to know, I want to know about the success of what we're doing to help our teacher, or our students, rather, acclimate into the systems of teaching that we have rather than, you know, a swath of everyone is the same, you know? If someone's been here, as Ken mentioned, for four months and they don't speak the language yet, it's really hard to expect them to do well.
So each spring, Alex and Rachel, they provide an update to the board and that's something that we can, ensures a part of the presentation. How are students are, the students who've been in Richfield for X amount of years, how are they performing? Also, our Ls, how are they performing on the access test? And, and Dr. Will Height will definitely give her presentation with that information in it, but that's something that we can include in our spring presentation to the board.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I want to just say thank you so much for all the work that you do. From, from my mom experience, I know that both my kids seem to be having a lot of fun and learning at school and that's always so encouraging to, to hear. And I know you have invested a lot of time and resources with the professional learning communities, making a learning culture for our staff. And that's, that's, that's a culture on its own. So thank you for the work that you do building that, because that's, that's, that's how we move kids forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Cole.
We're leaving while it's quiet.
I look forward to seeing Eric as a chair having to wait till the very last minute to ask questions. That's gonna be fun.
The expectation is you guys will get all the questions.
That was a nice presumptive close.
We will, we will. Right? All right. That concludes our superintendent update and now we move on to commendations.
All right. So we've got two commendations for you tonight. First, RPS would like to commend CJ Armstrong, senior basketball player at Richfield High School. CJ recently broke the all-time boys' basketball scoring record of 1,747 points. He's now working towards scoring 2,000 points, a number that also has not been done in Richfield history. CJ recently signed on to play basketball at Augustana next year. Congratulations to CJ. The basketball team will be having a celebration for him tomorrow night in correlation with the basketball game. So congratulations CJ. And then RPS would also like to commend associates in women's health and Abghain's specialist clinic, sonography department donating pants, underwear and products, feminine hygiene products to be given to RMS students through the health office. Was part of the Power To You Pants Drive, which aims to support and empower students experiencing menstruation at school. So thank you to the members of the sonography department for supporting our RMS students. We put this in commendations because donations that come to Richfield Public Schools go in through donations, but donations that are funneled off to students come in a different way. And so this was, this was something we just wanted to acknowledge with the commendations. We thank them also.
Thank you very much. And congratulations to CJ. Quite a nice fit. All right. With that, we're moving into consent agenda. Is anyone ready to move the consent agenda for approval?
I'll move the consent agenda.
A second.
We have a motion by Director Polis and a second by Director Spencer. Before we move into a vote, are there any additional questions to be made about any of the items in the consent agenda? Seeing none, can go for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye and the consent agenda is approved. And this brings us to all business, beginning with policy 979, community use of school facilities and grounds. This one's for action.
Yes, we are hoping for a passage upon a fifth read. We have major, major changes, but not related to our new update of the policy. Just a couple of small changes, very small since the last reading. But just as a reminder, this governs our facility usage, our facility rental, not long-term lease, and also the prioritization about how space is governed. And so we just wanted this in front of you for the final review for hopeful passage.
Are there any questions, final questions about this one? Seeing none, is anyone ready to move this policy for review for approval?
I'll move the policy as presented.
Okay. Director Polis has made a motion. Director Carter, I'm gonna give this one to you, you first for a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye and policy 979 has been, the review has been approved. The next one is policy 521, graduation requirements and administrative guidelines. This one's also for action today.
Yes, so this is the third read. We have gotten comprehensive feedback on this particular policy. This would realign our credits. The specific changes are most important on page two. Updating the components of the class of 2026 where students would only be required to complete one credit of PE, thus expanding by one to 17 elective credits. And then in 2028, the new requirement of the state for a credit of personal finance, which would then reduce them back down again to 16 elective credits. And so just clarifying those components and making sure that all the expectations realign to the state, providing that full flexibility for our kids, while also making sure we get the comprehensive opportunities. And just as a reminder, elective students have all of the choice they could possibly want. This would not change any of that.
Are there any questions, comments or concerns? I want to thank the seniors at the high school for their excellent presentations, public comments and participation during the MAC meeting. I also want to share that after three years of my son being at the high school, I had no idea that he only needed two electives for PE and he's been taking, he's taking like seven by now. So we had some conversations at home. About the electives, so...
Yeah, from an elective perspective, our fax classes and our PE classes are amongst the most popular of the things that are not required for kids. And so we have a number of students who just take repeated numbers of those. Again, none of those things change and we try to drive our staffing based on the requests and needs for our kids.
Yet we have enough who didn't want to do too required.
Well, so there's a difference between required and choice, right? There are, as we also heard and you heard, there are also students who do not necessarily participate or feel, it feels like they're assigned. And then there's also some who feel like their choices are restricted by that. This would, again, kids who wanted to take seven times could absolutely still take seven times.
Probably five times.
Again, based on the priorities of the board, providing that opportunity for choice for our kids, providing fewer restrictions that aren't required.
I'm impressed with the sophomore with seven PE credits down.
Well, no, I, I counted, he's a junior, so it would be five. I, I added an extra two because it feels that way. But for someone whose favorite subject was recess, I guess I shouldn't have been surprised.
Well, so you subtract the two required.
It's like, okay.
So it's an interesting point, whether intended or not, of like, would we ever want to go ahead and say we restrict the number of electives in a certain class? Or like, could you retake a certain class for your elective? Right in, put stipulation of that.
I think that, I think for a lot of students, their, their electives are kind of cut out for them based on like what they need to graduate. There's also some things that I know, for example, at my house, we have like a mom require elective, dad require elective. And to get out of that requirement, there's like permissions need to be made and I actually allowed the skip of Spanish because of PE this year. So I'm like, you know, he didn't, so you make a good point, but I also don't know, I don't know, restricting sounds kind of harsh and, and sports is so important.
Well, on the other hand, if a kid wants to get into a physically related post-secondary program, for example, exercise, science, or something like that, the more PE credits they have, the more competitive they'll be for the college, too.
Fair point.
Our limitations, I would say, are limited to as long as the student has not mathematically eliminated the potential of graduation.
Right.
And I, and I trust that the guidance department is catching that.
I mean, it just, at some level, right, our job here is to discuss these things and like think it through, right? I mean, and it's interesting to hear Steve's comment, like, we're trying to be as least restrictive as possible. And then I also think from a parent perspective, like, follows point, do I look and reflect on the electives that my children have chosen? Because like, I'm like, do you really need another study hall? You know, it's a question we have in the Carter household, right? It's like, so, not that the upper hear me say that on mic, but that's the case, right? So, and then I look and I go, if we help give direction for other families and right, we're, we're trying to help other parents, like, how do they get this advice guidance? Just reflecting on it, I guess.
Right. So I'm, I'm just gonna remind the board in my lovely 11 years in Richfield, the values of student voice, student empowerment and choice have been a consistent message of the group. And so certainly educating and informing our kids, and we have often heard feedback that we need to do a better job of informing our students or communicating in a way that is heard and lands. But it would be a very significantly different move on behalf of this board if we were to suggest that we're going to begin reducing student voice, which would be telling them, no, we have decided that you don't get those options. I, I don't, I just will always say, I don't prefer to have students taking 10 of the same class and it's not my role and responsibility to restrict that. That, that's up to the student and the guidance of this board has been consistent in, it really helps me lead, that you all have been very consistent in, and yet that's what the kids want. It doesn't hurt them in any way from graduation. It doesn't do anything. It is, it is what they want and what they value that we're supposed to try to align to, so.
I, I think there's also, at least my experience with my kids and the guidance counselors, there's been a couple of examples of the guidance counselor going, are you sure you want to do that? Or I recommend you do this other thing instead, right? And so I think we let the guidance counselors guide students in that way. And, and the requirements that are put out by the state and ratified here within this for our own students, you know, there are a good number of electives, but depending on what your career path is, those electives very quickly go away. If you want to get the dual-language certification, that takes a lot of the credits away. If you want to go on to post-secondary education, there's additional math and science requirements that are part of that or second language requirements that are part of that that very quickly eat away at those electives. And so I don't think you're going to see very many students take that many PE courses.
Yes, and I hear what you're saying and I appreciate it, those are the kids who are going down those special tracks. Really, my question is more on the kids who aren't, right? And it's like, I also appreciate Steve's point, I was just glancing to see, do we say anywhere in here that the whole point is to get the students' choice? Because I think to your point, it's like at some level, writing down that directive, I think is helpful in general, like, how do we leave our mark in saying that in five years when we look at this policy, when we are all not here, that the policy that we say, oh, yeah, right? It's like, we talked about it and, but you may be here, Tim, I don't know. Where we say, this is kind of the direction and guidance of the board and the spirit of the policy. Just again, reflecting on this.
While we are looking at you.
I don't know. I never know.
Guess Tim might be here in five years.
I, I, I just come back to like, we are setting, you know, what the requirements are for graduation and leaving as much as we are comfortable up to student choice is, is the way we want our students to do it so they can guide their own path and take what is relevant and meaningful to them, so that it keeps them engaged. It's not up to us. It's not, you know, certainly, you know, my own children don't take my advice. I don't imagine... I don't imagine many others would. So I'm not, you know, I, we, we wanna, you know, align with statute, we wanna align with what, what makes sense from a community standpoint, and then after that, it really is student choice. And if a student decides they want a lot of physical education classes, as Director List had said, it could be, you know, certainly very relevant to them for, for post-secondary life. Or it could just be something that keeps them coming to the building on a, on a routine basis, and keeps them interested and aligned and attached to the building and the community in that way, and helps all their other courses that might not be their favorites. So, as, as flexible as possible, I think is what we should be.
And thank you for highlighting the relevant section that says, the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish, which is on page two of policy five twenty-one.
Yeah, just says, it's intended that students have some choices to when requirements are met. Those pages will shift as soon as the red lines are done.
All right.
So move.
Take a second.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Director Carter and a second by Director Lee's. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair both side, and policy five two one is approved. The next one is policy six oh six for homeschooling and administrative guideline.
Yes, just trying to go through policy three with a recommendation for passage. This one is mostly updated in regard to formatting and remains a very similar policy to what it had in the past. So this is our third reading, guiding how we support homeschooled students. There are currently ninety in the district, representing forty-five families. So with that, we have, again, no significant changes since our last meeting, third read, hoping for passage tonight of homeschooling and the accompanying guideline.
All right, any questions, comments, motions?
I'll move the policy as presented.
I'll second.
Same motion by Director Polis and a second by Director Spencer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair both side, and policy six oh six is approved. The next one is a draft policy four one four, staff professional boundaries and draft administrative guideline for our review.
Yes, and so this is for a second read, and again, this is a second read. We've had this reviewed by HR, Safe and Supportive Schools, the student groups at RMS and RCEP, and then we have also had a read from Education Richfield. I will summarize and synthesize to say, we have gathered a great deal of feedback. We got a list of comments asking for some additional clarification, some rewording. We do have a set of that in front of you tonight, and so there are some changes and some additional clarifications in regard to how we clarify safeguards for adults when interacting with students in the community and on time. We actually don't anticipate this one being passed with just three reads, we might, but we also believe that this needs to go through our attorney. We'll gather additional feedback as we redraft, so we're gonna anticipate possibly taking a break prior to seeing this again, and this one will, will probably take a, a couple of more reads before we pass it. And so we just want this in front of you with the updates for you all to read tonight.
All right.
Quick question about Parent Square, because I think, I feel like when we talk about this policy, we keep going back to Parent Square, and are we doing additional training with Parent Square?
Yes, we're continuing to do additional training in Parent Square, we can, continue to do additional training with coaches, and our plan is to continue to implement that in a more effective way. It still does provide challenges, but I would also say there are additional questions. Clarification for those who live in the community, work in the community, and also have relationship with families inside and outside, and how does, how does this policy provide clarity on that? Questions were related to what is, where does the Richfield Public Schools oversight stop, and when does somebody being a community member begin? How do we make sure we're being clear about what is an emergency, when people should drive home, when they shouldn't drive home, how you do communicate, how you don't communicate, how we post things publicly and at times gather things together to create a, an amalgam of pictures together rather than just one at a time? And so there, there's a bunch of questions that, that as we play this out, again, we're just gonna need to work our way through and take our time. This one might take, again, several readings and several revisions, and as a reminder, this is the kind of thing that we implement in the fall, as we pass, as we pass this over the course of whatever time, over the course of this year.
Thank you.
I, I just had one question, because I know that this is a, this is a new policy for us, correct?
Yes.
And so is this replacing anything, or is there something similar to this that's already in place that we should be referencing?
Not in Richfield schools, there is an MSBA policy, and there's a large number of districts that have a similar policy, and so we are just working our way to do that, to provide some clarity. And some of the things we've had long-term clarity challenges on are, how does one determine what's appropriate to place on the internet? How does one determine what is appropriate in terms of communication with students? And how do we, how do we get super clear about that in a way that supports our team members and supports our students most effectively?
And was it a state mandate that created this, or?
No, it is just strongly recommended, and then also based on some of the practices, we're really trying to make sure aligned to board vision and successful oversight. We wanna, we wanna try to provide that clarity to our team members.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
It's just great to see that the student input has been input, and I think we need to recognize the students, one way or another, that they actually have a voice.
And I can do that, the next.
Yeah, we do that in Safe and Supportive, but similarly, so if you think about graduation requirements, where we had the high schoolers in social studies, I'll be meeting with the instructional coach and the team at the high school, and there will be conversation in senior high school social studies classes to review the changes that were made and the conversation that happened. So, so we do try to circle back and make sure that communication occurs.
All right. Looks like no more questions at this time. I can move on to the next draft, our PS legislative platform, twenty twenty-five.
Yes, legislative platform, take two. And so again, we now have, we just did a little bit of rewording, we now have the AMSD, MSBA, and MASA platforms, just as a reminder of the code. The one at the end, so if you look at provide permanent funding for future comp revenue left in jeopardy due to universal free meals, you'll see one, two, and three. One is AMSD, two is MSBA, three is MASA, and so we wanted to leave that documentation for you all. We also highlighted in blue the things that carried over from last year. And then I also wanna point you to one oh nine and one ten and one eleven in the packet. What our legislators typically ask for is some of the data and information backing these up, and so we added that to our draft. And so we are looking for additional feedback, which could certainly occur tonight or any time over the next couple of weeks prior to our next board meeting. We'll look to finalize this at our next board meeting, and then use it as a conversation piece at our second meeting in January, and then use that as we support our legislative partners during the legislative session.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, suggestions? Okay, we should see those return next time. We're now moving into new business with the resolution designated polling places for twenty twenty-five.
All right, and so, as we do have an election coming up, although this happens every single year, reported, it's being asked for us to approve the designated polling places twenty twenty-five. We can make future changes by board resolution at least ninety days before the election is needed, but the resolution asks for this to occur in December for polling places for the twenty twenty-five election cycle. So with that, I have this for you for a proposed resolution.
And there's nothing new about these locations, correct? They, they appear to all be.
They are the same to the best of my knowledge, yes.
Same as they were the prior election.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll move the resolution as presented.
I'll second that.
Here we have a res- oh my gosh, a motion by Director Polis, a second by Director Lee's. I'm gonna pull the board starting on my left for, because it's a resolution, Director Spencer.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Lee's.
Aye.
Director Polis.
Aye.
And Chair both side, and this resolution is approved. Next one is preschool and pre-K fees for the next coming year, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Yes, and so, we previously provided free pre-K for four-year-olds through voluntary pre-K. However, in the last legislative session, there is now a requirement that students and families meet eligibility to participate in free, emphasis on the free, preschool programs funded through VPK. And so what that means is that it's on each district's responsibility to determine eligibility and determine who doesn't meet eligibility, and then make decisions about pre-K. And so it's our responsibility to provide a sliding scale for our four-year-olds. And so how this works is, similar to ALC and extended time, if students meet one of twelve possible categories, they qualify for free pre-K. If they are determined by our district to be at risk, they also would qualify for free pre-K. And so our process involves students, if they are, if families are voluntarily sharing that they qualify for one of the twelve areas, they would receive free pre-K. Those then choosing to participate in the assessment may qualify for free pre-K depending on the results. Our assessment will determine if they are ready for kindergarten. Readiness for kindergarten means that they would be entering pre-K already complete and already at a place where they were ready for pre-K, or ready for kindergarten, which isn't the entire goal of our pre-K program. And so then students who weren't ready for kindergarten would also be determined at risk, and they could receive free pre-K. The students who are already ready for kindergarten and don't meet any of the other qualifications would then be subject, if they wanted to participate in the program, to our sliding scale. And so what you have in front of you is what that sliding scale would be for our students to pay if they were required to pay for the pre-K program. And again, this is not fully our choice. How we choose to implement this is, we do have some, some processes related to, but this is a decision that's made at the state level through legislation. So again, the ways to qualify for free pre-K have changed, and so we have developed and devised the system, and have that in front of you, because all fees and things like that, we bring to the board.
And so this, this is a collection of fees, not currently in use, correct?
That is correct.
And it's for next year?
That is correct.
Okay, do we have a sense for, if we could pretend we had the applications and understanding, what, what kind of revenue would we be, have been collecting if this was in place already?
We assume very little. Very little.
And, and that, and that's based on the, the premise that, like you'd said, there were many, many ways for someone to qualify for it to be free?
Correct, and then there is that district methodology for determining at risk. And so most of our students who are entering pre-K, meaning they are four, would not already be ready for kindergarten, which then makes them at risk. And so most students would qualify for free pre-K, there would be a small handful, don't know the exact number, we'll have that data after this year. But we need this decision to be made now, or we need to move forward with this now, because people are already beginning to enroll, and we need to be able to inform them as soon as possible about the new impact of the rules, and then have that conversation with them about how they choose to handle this.
I'm just, my, my concern is that some of the, the, the income cutoffs and, and cost-related are, like, I look at the household size of two in the thirty-seven, eight fifteen, and that, that the person would be, be charged a hundred twenty dollars a month. Is that, I mean, we, we, we've come up with these figures, are they based on?
These are, we, we worked in collaboration with other districts with sliding scale pre-Ks. And, and worked to find, I'd say, a happy medium, and we are generally on the significantly lower end in regard to projected charging.
Lower end in ter- are.
In terms of fees, in projected fees for participation, yes.
I just, I just, okay. I don't have more questions right now, I'm just, I've been exposed as not being, as, as in the details on this one, as I'd wanna be.
Can this be approved tonight?
It's helpful to be approved now, because people are already inquiring about enrollment. We, we could.
If we determined that fees were too challenging, or if our assessment that almost every student is going to qualify for free pre-K was incorrect, we can come back and readjust or revise as we move forward, but we need a starting point, and we did the research and work to believe that this is an effective starting point, and we believe this will have an impact on very few families.
So I think what you're saying is, this is, this kind of sets a floor that you feel is fair at this point, but if we get to May or April and we're hearing feedback that it's either too expensive or too expensive for my family's income level, it gives us an opportunity to reset that, and it'll either be less expensive or have a, we can adjust it so that it doesn't hurt anybody.
We could, we could revise this in the future if we wanted to, yes. This would be a starting point, and we could gather data as we go along. Because this is brand new, we have to find a place to start, and we, we thought that this would work.
Just to make sure I'm understanding the scale, so, like, I'm looking at level three, so, so as we go from two to three to four, and then to five, it dips?
Two to three.
So these are the.
Annual income, yes, for, that fifth child is a bonus.
That is the threshold for educational benefits, we think, but yes, that, that does look like it should be much smaller, like these, yeah, they both dip and overlap in there, which is.
It suggests a household of size five is that sweet spot where everything gets, gets easier. I have reason not to believe that.
Yeah, I think that, like, like I said, I believe this is based on the educational benefits. So, to pay, so, so let's use that as an example. If a student whose family is at level two has five children, or five in the household, sorry, three children, two adults, or one adult, four children, they'd have to make between sixty-seven and seventy-three. Their student would already have to be performing as a four-year-old, or a newly-turned-four-year-old, as a three-year-old, not turning-four-year-old yet, at the entry to kindergarten level and showing that they have letter, letter sounds, math, and numericals, and social emotional behavior at the level of an entering kindergarten, then they would be in a position where they would be set up to, to not be determined to be at risk. Frankly, what I would tell you is, if that kid exists, that kid does not necessarily need free pre-K, and the reason to be in pre-K is to prep kids for, for school. Not, no, again, we, we don't wanna eliminate them from the opportunity.
I, I think, Mr. Carter, are you questioning, you're willing to support this as is, except that the top end of a household of size five needs to be at least as big as the top, the top end of a household of size four? Right? That, that seems like a start, because that looks like a typo.
It does.
Yeah, it does.
So, with, with that as a correction, at least make the top end seventy-four.
Probably more like eighty-three, one sixty would be my guess.
The three was not supposed to be an eight.
Or scale it to, to whatever it's supposed to be, but that, that will require some, some logical correction.
Yes.
With that correction coming, and I will trust that it is, I'll, I'll move the item.
I, before we do that, because now we're getting into it, the, the, the jump between five and six also like change, so are we gonna now have rules about, are we okay with the?
I'm very comfortable with, I, I will say, it looks to me like, if, if I'm looking at level three, they are increasing with a going from seventy-four, eight, eighty-one in column three down to seventy-three, one sixty-one, that doesn't seem, I, I would agree, it looks like it should probably be a different number, and so I am absolutely gonna. And so I am absolutely gonna make sure we go back and double-check that and alter that number to, again, it looks like a typo that should probably be 83, but I'm not 100% sure. And so I can acknowledge that.
The trend would say 80.
The trend would say something more like that.
Well, not even, because that's 9,000 difference. And what I'm thinking about forms is that there's, when I've seen tables like this, like what the conversation has made me think now, is the increase from one to the, by adding one human to the household does? And generally, these tables will have, like, add this much for any additional person. And so if, which we don't have...
That's fair.
So then I'm wondering, like, this seems arbitrary.
Well, they seem tremendously arbitrary, but they're based on some prior version that was passed.
And we believe they come from the free and reduced benefits format, and that that's where they came in, and the cutoffs from that.
Okay.
So, okay, so I'd move the item with the need to correct household size five.
And our boss?
And Ms. Gold is suggesting that we need to address seven-plus, household of seven-plus.
Or we could just make it six-plus.
Well, no, I believe Ms. Gold was saying that there are other forms where you've seen this, where each incremental from six to seven would add nine or $10,000 to each of the sales.
Government benefits have that.
You're right, to be in line with other benefits, yeah. So, do we need this today?
We can, I'm guessing that the fourth person will get us ahead a lot, as you know, we go through registrations.
Craig is taking a look at the moment and taking a look about the free and reduced information, just to match that. What I'd say if we're not comfortable is that if we are able to move it with the expectation that we bring back a revised chart with numbers, that we are able to share that there will be a sliding scale, a sliding scale and an assessment methodology for identifying at risk, which is essentially what we're moving forward. But actually, as I look at this, Craig, do you have anything? Otherwise, yeah, I think we have to bring it back.
Okay. So then I will, I'll withdraw the, moving the item if we're definitely, certainly bringing it back.
It's fine. We're just gonna bring it back on the 6th of January.
I guess, I wasn't trying to shoot it down. I mean, the one thing I look at too is...
No, no, that's good.
I just get concerned is like, if I'm seeing this, this is maybe go, I'm out, right? I'm not bringing my kids to Richfield for at least pre-K, and that's not sort of what we're trying to say either, right? So that's...
So every district in the state of Minnesota offering free pre-K has to offer a scale of fee for those who do not qualify for benefits?
So this is for those who do not qualify for the benefit?
Okay, so in getting communication...
Several ways to qualify.
What I would ask the board, since this is hopefully going live tomorrow, since the applications are going live, is that we are able to pass that there is a sliding fee scale and the bottom part of the chart that says monthly tuition fee, with the expectation that we bring back the income levels prior to the next meeting, or for the next meeting? And so we are saying that there is a sliding scale that would involve the level one, free, level two, 120, 170, 250, and 290, 250, and then level three, 160, 230, and 370, and that we are expected of them come back to the board with cutoffs for what qualify for each of those levels. That allows us to communicate out that there's a sliding scale here as the fee, and that we will clarify out what allows us to qualify for that fee.
So going back to way earlier in the discussion, I believe, Mr. Spencer had clarified, we can update this in the future as needed. So what we need this, so for business purposes, we need something as a placeholder as early as tomorrow.
Ideally, yes.
And I think what Dr. Yunowski is saying is, the monthly tuition fee at the bottom chart, the bottom half of the chart, is the important thing that we need to publish. We'll come back with a sliding scale at a future...
With what qualifies for one for the sliding scale?
Huh?
Is that a motion? Couldn't help it.
I will move...
Craig has one tag in of information.
So I'm just looking, it looks like the level one is the reduced fee annual salary under educational benefits. The level two annual income, other than that for family of five, I believe each one of those top amounts are 29% more, just over 29% more than the level one education benefit So that range is just generally going to be 29%. So you would anticipate, if my assumptions are right doing the calculations, that 67, 673, if we use that same factor as the others to multiply, it'll be 87,000, I think, is what I came up with, but...
That makes sense with the...
So that clearly needs a change.
Sure.
So again, so I'm just gonna bring us back to...
Back to the sliding scale, and Mr. Spencer, you'd move this, is that correct?
Yeah, I'll move the monthly tuition portion of what we're looking at on the slide here.
Again, with the understanding that the sliding scale is coming?
Yep, that's right.
I will second that.
Wonderful. We have a motion by Director Spencer and a second by Director Polis. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, Chevautsai, and we are approving this one with the expectation that we will see an updated annual...
We will have that back for you and cleaned up and clarified for January 6th.
Perfect.
Which I believe is our first meeting, or are we the fourth?
Right. So with that, we're now into advanced planning, starting with legislative update. Are there any updates later to the legislature?
Not, the only update we have, so just want the board to be aware, we have invited, we had some questions about whether Representative Howard will be able to make literally any of the dates. So we actually have reached out to Senator Mann and Representative Green, both the elected officials from Edina who oversee our area of Richfield schools, and...
And Dr. Mann is now in there. Never mind, that's a different one.
Yes, and they are actually Ed Policy, Ed Finance, and have voiced into some of the things that we are looking at. And so it might also make our meeting even more relevant.
One more. I want to share that I went to the Minnesota School Board Association Annual Delegate Assembly last weekend, not this one, the one before, and there were 28 policies reviewed, mostly passed. I would say they're mostly in alignment to some of the same things that we know, mostly related to budgets, the very big call for pushing back against unfunded mandates from the legislature. The feeling that I heard, there's not a lot of hope that things are going to, that not a lot's gonna happen next year because of the divided Minnesota House, 50-50, and all of those chair committees. There's also a potential expectation that session is gonna go longer, that there's no way that we're gonna end by the, by the date required in May. But in the meantime, what MSBA directors want us to know is that the meetings where they chat about the legislative updates are about to start in January, and they're encouraging us all to go. And they also want us to participate when they do their lobby day, and also they want to know who among us is ready to be connected with our elected officials for any kind of conversation related to that. I think in Richfield, because we're small and we already have such a strong relationship with our elected official, that might not be, you know, something that they will need to do for us. But I'm sharing just so that you know that school board members across the state are being encouraged to do that, so I'll be that.
Thank you.
Okay, informations and questions from board members?
Only one quick thing. Reminder that Wednesday, 2:00, is the RSEP graduation. I know that I will be there. I know that Director List, looks like Director Polis will be there. And so if anybody else is interested, it is, I think there are between seven and 10 students who are anticipated to graduate in a small, brief, and yet lovely ceremony.
When is that?
2:00 at RSEP.
Which day?
On Wednesday.
Some other information about City Hall tomorrow is hosting the Legislative Breakfast beginning at 7:30.
That is correct. I am attending, and Mr. Holgy is also attending, in case there are connections or things related to anything Mr. Holgy can help with. So it should be fun.
What is that again?
That is the Legislative Breakfast for the city, and they run a little differently than we do. So they just run through presentation after presentation, and we try to have a little more of a conversation. So it's just different styles. It's an interesting event.
So like the city council reviewing their...
The city council reviewed their legislative platform, but theirs is, they run through, each department has a platform, and so there are about seven or eight different runs of things that the city will run through in their conversation.
We should go.
What day is that again?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, 7:30.
Is that the new city council members? Are we between...
Not yet.
They have not been seated yet. They are seated in January.
Because I think that this week was, or last week, rather, was the last meeting for the previous.
I'm sure the new members will be present, but they won't be officially council members.
Right. Councilmember elects. Any suggested or future agenda items? Right, seeing none. I'm going to share the future meeting dates. We will be meeting again January 6th at 2025, at 7:00 p.m. Again, this is going to be our board organizational meeting. The next meeting after that will be on a Tuesday, not a Monday, as we commemorate Martin Luther King Jr. Day. So we'll be here Tuesday, January 21st, at 6:00 p.m. with a board study session with the local legislators, followed by a regular board meeting with public comment at 7:00. And after that, we're gonna need to approve a motion to go into closed session as allowed by Minnesota Statute 13D03 for labor negotiation strategy.
I'll move that we enter closed session as allowed by Minnesota Statute 13D03 for labor negotiations strategy.
Second.
We have a motion by Director Polis, a second by Director Carter. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, Chevautsai, and we will now be entering to closed session at 9:13.